Okay, we're going to return from a recess and a closed session and start our open session. And our first item on our open session is our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. We're going to continue with our annual election of our board chair and other board officers. First is our board chair. Are there any nominations for the office of board chair?
Yes. I would like to nominate Erica Allenberg for board chair.
Are there any other nominations for the office of board chair? Are there any other nominations for the office of board chair? If there are no other nominations for board chair, the nominations for the office of board chair are closed. We will now vote for the office of board chair. All those in favor of electing Erica Allenberg for board chair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Erica Allenberg is elected board chair. We will continue with the election of other board officers. Nominations are now for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I would have a nomination for Julie Green for vice chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? If there are no other nominations for the office of vice chair, then the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. We will now vote for the office of vice chair. All those in favor of electing Julie Green to the office of vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Julie Green is elected vice chair. We will continue with the office of clerk. Are there any nominations for the office of clerk?
I'd like to nominate Janie Shaw.
Nope.
Scratch that, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry to the public.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Karen Gabler.
Are there any other nominations for the office of clerk? If there are no other nominations for the office of clerk, then the nominations for the office of clerk are closed. All those in favor of electing Karen Gabler for the office of clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Karen Gabler is elected clerk. We will now continue with the election for the office of treasurer. Is there a nomination for the office of treasurer?
I would like to nominate Janie Shaw for the office of treasurer.
Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? If there are no other nominations for the office of treasurer, then the nominations for the office of treasurer are closed. All those in favor of electing Janie Shaw for the office of treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Janie Shaw is elected to the office of treasurer. We will now continue with nominations for the office of assistant treasurer and assistant clerk, which are three different roles. So if there are any nominations for the roles of assistant treasurer or the two offices of assistant clerk, please name them now. And I would personally like to nominate Michael Birdman for assistant treasurer, Regina Neville for assistant clerk, and Dan Arum also for assistant clerk. Are there any other nominations for the offices of assistant treasurer or assistant clerks? Are there any other nominations for the offices of assistant treasurer and assistant clerks? If there are no other nominations for the offices of assistant treasurer and assistant clerks, then the nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Michael Birdman for assistant treasurer and Regina Neville and Dan Arum for the office of assistant clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Michael Birdman is elected assistant treasurer and Regina Neville and Dan Arum are elected assistant clerks. Thank you, everybody, for participating in that process. We have no members of the public here to speak to us, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda is approved. And now we're going to move on to our two discussion items. And our first discussion item is on our Edina Virtual Pathway program, our elementary program specifically. And we have assistant superintendent Randy Smazl and our virtual pathway coordinator, Steve Cullison here. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, our school board members and community members. Joined by Stephen Cullison here this evening to talk to you about a proposal, administrative proposal for the future of EVP at elementary. And EVP started as Edina Virtual Academy during the pandemic time. And then, once it was approved by Minnesota Department of Education, or once we were approved by Minnesota Department of Education to be a K-12 comprehensive online provider, that was rebranded as Edina Virtual Pathway. The program, I will emphasize, has provided a quality education, in particular at the elementary level, has provided a quality education for our learners. We've received positive feedback from the staff, from the students, and from many families for the last few years. But we have had declining enrollment in that EVP elementary program. And it is at a point where we don't see that as a viable option moving forward. And so the proposal this evening highlights a few of those elements around that proposal and what our plans would be moving forward. Our recommendation would be that we take, we plan out a two-year phase out and that we offer EVP elementary in grades four through five for next year for the 23-24 school year. In 21-22, we had about 90 students, and this year we have about 29 students in EVP elementary. So you can see that that enrollment has declined substantially. We currently have two teachers teaching in that program. Our proposal would be that would move down to one multi-age section next year and would involve one staff member as the classroom homeroom teacher. You have, as part of your resolution, a summary of the budget for EVP, both at the elementary level and at the secondary level. And one of the things that we would articulate is that those expenses are primarily around staffing, some materials, but our primary expenses are around staffing. The FTE for the classroom teachers, and then, in some cases, some partial staffing for specialists that also provide some support services for students. Although the costs of K-5 have been negative to the district, the overall budget has been positive because of the enrollment at the high school level has carried the elementary expenses. So we are net positive this year, but we don't want to continue with a program that is also net negative in terms of revenue. At the middle school level, we have not had sufficient enrollment since we made this offering. And we've had a few families who have signed up to participate in a virtual option. And we have worked with another school district to be a partner with us for families that have wanted that option, so that we can offer that option to the other school district. At the high school level, we have been running Edina Virtual Pathway this past year, and we've continued to see growth at the high school level in our full-time students participating in that Edina Virtual Pathway. We've had, we currently have 39 students at the high school level that are participating, but we have hundreds that are participating on a part-time basis. So the niche that we see or the need that we are trying to fill really gets much more substantive at the high school level. And so that is something that we see as the future of the Edina Virtual Pathway and where we're going in successive years. In terms of communication, we have notified parents or guardians of this proposal. After we had posted the information to the board, we have shared this with principals and the proposal with the teachers. And then, pending board decision on the January 9th regular session, we will also notify parents, depending upon where we're at with that decision. And then we'll continue to survey families for needs as we move forward. And many families, we know, will come back into a brick-and-mortar environment. And other families may want to continue to participate in an online environment. And that's where our tuition agreement with Bloomington Public Schools will come in. Where they will remain enrolled as Edina Public School students, we will retain some of that revenue, but then the other revenue will go to Bloomington Public Schools. All of that will culminate when we finalize our staffing in March of this year as we try to prepare for the following school year. So all of that is in the resolution that you have in front of you. That was a very quick summary. I'm going to turn it over to Stephen to see if he has any other additional comments you'd like to add.
Hey, everybody, thank you for having me. No, that was a very good summary. I suppose there are only two points of clarification that I would add to that. One, regarding the notion of families who want to stay online and would they return to in-person or leave the district. It should be noted that, under this proposal, almost all of the students who are online right now would be able to continue online, even though we saw this as a program that we're proposing to phase out, in part due to financial reasons, but also because there's sort of a gap between the elementary offering and the high school offering. We also felt that we had, you know, we'd made a commitment to our families. We wanted to, if we could do so in a way which was financially responsible, meet that obligation. And so the proposal initially was, take the existing grades and let those students continue through and phase it out. Here's the thing about that, though. Next year, we would have had one classroom, that was our 2-3 classroom, would have only had five students. Our fourth and fifth grade cohort is larger, and so we can have a very healthy-sized classroom for that. So, under this proposal for next year, only five of our existing students would be either, would be in a place where we wouldn't be able to offer them our own online program. And I say only, I don't want to minimize the potential disruption to those families whom we've served well and have had a good relationship with. So I, by no means, want to minimize that. But I just wanted to stress that for most of the families who are participating in Edina Virtual Pathway at the elementary level, under this proposal, we would continue to offer it. The other place I wanted to provide some clarification was around the budget and finance. At the elementary level, relative to the revenue generated by enrollment, we are operating at a deficit, as described there. We are relative to what was allocated to EVP well below that number, because that number was allocated under the assumption that we'd be serving a larger number of students. And in fact, when you add the costs of both the elementary and secondary programs, we still come well short of the money that's set aside in the budget. So when we talk about operating a deficit for elementary, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we are coming in well below what was budgeted. At the secondary level, our revenue exceeds the costs for students there. So if we treated our budget as really being tied to what our total revenue generation was, if we compared that to our costs, EVP still is costing the district less than we are generating, separate from whatever was budgeted. So, those are the only two things that I had to add. Anything else to add before we take questions?
I think we can turn it back to Chair Allenberg for questions.
Great, do board members have questions? Yep.
So, thank you very much for very good information. I'm just curious, from the 90 students that we had, that dropped down to 21, which kind of precipitates the enrollment loss that was in there, do we have a sense of how many of those might have come back into the brick-and-mortar environment in Edina?
I'm sorry that I don't have all of the numbers for that, the majority of them, and the ones who didn't return to in-person in their home districts. I do not recall a single conversation of anybody who stayed online but opted elsewhere. It was just a matter of, for those families where their resident district wasn't Edina, if they didn't geographically live nearby. So it was entirely a people opting to return to in-person, whether or not it was Edina or elsewhere.
Excellent, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just one question. Do you know, other districts that were offering elementary-based virtual programming, were they experiencing the same thing? Were they seeing that, and it's basically becoming a high school-level flexibility?
I want to say yes to the first part and add some clarification to the second. Yes, the decline in enrollment at the elementary level, and in fact, decline, somewhat of a decline in enrollment broadly online is something that other providers are seeing. In this proposal, we are positing that the number of people who are online right now are the ones who are there because that's the style of learning that suits them best, that what we're seeing is really the tail end of the people who are in it out of concern around COVID. And that isn't something that is Edina-specific. However, for a district that has a larger population, let's say 8% of the population, online learning is really the thing for them. 8% of a larger district would be viable to continue. And so that's why there are some larger districts who are continuing their elementary programs, even as they've seen, perhaps as a percentage, seen their enrollment fall.
Go ahead, Julie.
I don't have any questions. I actually thought, I was going to ask the same thing that Director Birdman asked, but I just wanted to say thank you, because I really appreciate this proposal and this proactive approach to say, okay, here's where we are, here's where it makes sense. I thought the information you provided was fantastic. And I just also wanted just to say thank you, because I know the last three years, I think that the EVP programming showed the ability to adapt and to be flexible and meet the needs of our students in such a unique experience. And so I know our community appreciates that, and the data showed us time and time again, with all the reports that would come back, the impact it had on students. It was exceptional. And so I just want to say thank you for all that work. So, I agree with the proposal and the recommendation. But I just wanted to say that, because I, and I know the two of you have put a ton of time into this, so.
Thank you so much. And if I can take the opportunity, I myself have only been working with EVP this year. Randy and Dr. Stanley have been working on it for far longer, but I really, who knows if they're going to watch or hear this, but I really want to call out the EVP elementary teachers and paraprofessionals. Most of them have been there the whole time. They've been working on it for years and years and years. This is their baby. And the high-quality education they've provided is entirely due to their efforts. Well, I say entirely, there's been some support from DMTS. It takes a village, right? But I hate to accept that thank you when really the teachers who aren't here with us today and the support staff are the ones who've really done the work. So, thank you, and I'll pass on that thank you to them.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I will share that, please. Yeah, I mean, I remember the students coming in and just like, they were, they lit up, and they really excelled in that environment. And I think we learned a lot about, there are so many reasons why people or students would choose online learning. It can't just be assumed for one thing or another. So I think it really taught us a lot about student needs and meeting student needs. So please, share that along to your colleagues, so, thanks.
Regina?
Just a brief comment. I support the recommendation, it makes sense, I appreciate the presentation. Just what Director Green ended with, and what we've learned about the profile of students whose needs we can meet. I would really appreciate any data or information that can be captured for just our teaching and learning curriculum development, not to be shared tonight, but just to have in the future that there is a need. And really applauding Edina and our instructors who are meeting this need, recognizing that we, as a system, need to adapt and that there's a positive outcome for that. So, really grateful that there's a variety of needs that are being met and served by this procedure, this process. I would just value knowing a little bit more about that to see how it can inform other decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I, of course, want to recognize that that need will remain even in absence of this offering, and that's where the partnership with a larger neighboring district will. For those students who really, online is the need for, you know, whether it's health, anxiety, whatever it may be, or simply, they learn most easily that way, that, I'm pleased, I would be reticent to offer this if we didn't have a good solution ready for those families that need it, because the need will remain even after our current students, you know, graduate to middle school. Just as those students, when they graduate to middle school, some of them are going to say, you know, I'm ready to try in-person. But for those who are continuing online, we already would have had a plan in place for them to provide those services in partnership with another district.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is, I support the recommendation, but I was wondering if there's a minimum threshold for grades four and five that you guys feel that we should meet in order to run grades four and five next year? Because I think there's a balance between being customer-friendly and wanting to support our students and the reality of being fiscally responsible. So, I'm just wondering, from an administration perspective, I mean, I would hope that we can get all 29 students, but let's just say something happens and only 12 decide they want to sign up. Are we committed to running it, no matter what? And is that your recommendation? Or is there, is there some sort of cutoff where it's just not feasible to run this?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, Chair Allenberg. Right now, we believe we will have 25 students. And so that some of our due diligence work is to guarantee that we really do have a viable section here. We believe that that section will be viable, but it could present a scenario where maybe it's not viable. And then that, that would cause us to not offer it. But I think what we need to do maybe is talk about what that number would be, and we could bring it back on Monday before the board takes action on it.
I think that would be good, because I would hate to approve it and set expectations that we're going to run it no matter what, and then families be super disappointed. And like I said, maybe you guys talk, and the recommendation is that we want to meet the needs of our families, no matter what. But then I would like that information presented to me, because it could have an impact. And I'm not saying it will, but it's just something to consider from a decision-making perspective, so.
It's also nice to be transparent about, because assumingly, there is a number, right? If there was literally only one student left, we'd probably have to consider maybe referring them elsewhere. So being transparent about the number in advance seems wise. I'll note that this year, we're operating at a deficit relative to generated revenue, because we have class sizes of around 14 per teacher. And so there is room for that, say, 25 to drop to 20 and still have a much more favorable student-to-teacher ratio. So there's, I mean, essentially, other than five students, what we're proposing is consolidating our entire program, which now is two teachers into one. So there is room for students who maybe say, oh, if the program is closing, maybe now is a good time to return to in-person. I'm anticipating there'll be some of that. There's room for some of that to occur. But coming at with a, okay, where is that number? For the recommendation, I think that makes good sense.
Okay. And then my second question is that I assume, it's sort of a process, well, I guess it is a process question, is that I assume the board will, it might come in two questions, because I assume the board has to vote to basically eliminate the EVP program over time for grades E through eight. And I know I asked this when we talked about it, but I was wondering if that's the wording, or however we word the resolution or what we approve, does this preclude our eighth graders from taking high school-level classes online?
It would not.
Okay.
That, for purposes of MDE, having a, first, I suppose there's two points. One, so long as we're approved with MDE, we can, we can have our middle school students, so long as the board wished to and the district wished to. As far as MDE is concerned, we would be, we would be able to continue to do that, even if we were to. And so there's two different things, right? There's the district determining, do we want to offer it? And then there's the state's permission to offer. From the state's standpoint, they have something where you can simply put something on pause, is language that they introduced this year, because so many districts jumped into online learning. And even smaller ones than us found they didn't have enough students to do any grade level. But rather than completely withdrawing their permission to operate, said, well, put it on pause. You retain the right to do it without having to get reauthorized if you decide to come back later. I'm not sure what the length of a pause is, I'm not sure the MDE's specified. But I would propose, though it doesn't say it here, that there's no reason for us to go to MDE and ask for them to withdraw the right to offer until they say we've reached such number of years without offering it. So probably, the intention would be to maintain the permission to offer it, you know. Another, pandemic ramps up again. All of a sudden, lots of families want to go back. That retaining the- want to go back. That retaining the right to offer it, so long as we're able to, I think, would be a good thing. But no, we looked into it. I specifically asked MDE.
Great. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else. Thank you. Thanks for all the information and all the work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion item is a process overview of the city-school-district-board-election partnership process. Let me just pull this up. So this is coming from the Governance Committee, and at our 1212 work session, the city and the school district agreed it would be beneficial to have some further meetings to come up with a mutually beneficial, beneficial solution. And then we agreed to have governance to work, work on a suggested process. And that's what we're seeing tonight, is the suggested process to work together with the city for this mutually beneficial solution. And so there's some background information, and then it's a fairly simple process. The only thing that I wanted to note is there's two different colors on the process. One is for the 2023 election resolution. That's supposed to come to the board for discussion in, on the 9th, which is next week, and action in February. And then the broader issue of what do we do with future elections, which is the blue. That's the overarching process. So I'm happy to walk through it, or if you guys have questions, feel free to ask. But Julie or Stacy, do you have anything to add from governance perspective?
I think the only thing to add is that I think it is complicated, like for the community to look at this. And so just to be clear again, like we have, there's two different things working at the same time. We have the upcoming 2023 election in November that we did get a resolution from, from the city, a contract to move forward, that the city would still continue to run that election. And that's what will be discussed on Monday. So I think it's just a little bit confusing for the community to follow this. So anything that we can do to help keep communicating that, that there's two different running courses here, I think is helpful. So I just wanted to, anyone listening out there can hear that.
Thank you, Julie. I mean, the basic process, I think, is what we talked about briefly in our meeting, and then governance talked about having the city and school get together to talk about what are our common priorities and goals, and then see if there's a preliminary plan, then coming back to the board to get board feedback, sort of going in and then out and then out until we have a mutually agreed-upon plan. Once we have the 2023 plan in place, it's not quite as urgent, but we still need to get it figured out this spring. So this goes until an April, end of April timeframe. So, yes.
Just a point of clarification. So what's important is that for 2023, it's basically continuing on with what we've been doing for a very long time with the city running the election for, on our behalf, as a vendor, basically, that we pay to make, make that happen. And that's what the resolution that was just provided to us by the city that we're going to, Abby asked to consider and approve. That's step one, as Julie was just saying. But now the second part is then talking about, okay, going forward after 2023, what we're going to do from an election standpoint related to the school district. That's what's going to be discussed, as far as what are the options, what are the considerations, what might the city be able to do with us, what might we need to do, so on and so forth. These are all the questions that anyone in the community might have. This is what's going to be discussed between the city and the school district to determine, okay, what is the school district going to do going forward?
Correct.
After 2023.
Correct. And I think there also, though, is a sense of somewhat urgency after we have the resolution figured out for 2023, because the seats that are up, it would, it could potentially impact those seats if things get shifted. So for our community members or anybody who would be running for election, it's important that they would know if there's a shift, if they're running for one year, if they're running for three years, five years, or how. So that's the real impact, so that we're, that's why we're, even though it says it might not happen till, impact 2024, 25, it actually impacts this election. So that's a good point of clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything? Okay. So it looks like the, ideally, we're targeting the first week, the first week, I'm sorry, the week of 1/16/23 to have a, a meeting between the city and the schools. And I know that Stacy, you and I believe Scott have had a couple of conversations or emails back and forth about planning a couple of meetings. And I, does this align with?
Yeah, this, the dates and everything completely aligned with what Scott and I were thinking. And two offices are working to identify times that board, newly-elected board officers would be able to be in those meetings.
Okay. Thank you. That's it? That's all for this discussion item. Are there any leadership or committee updates from board members?
The only committee update is the Legislative Action Committee is having their legislative breakfast a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, January 11th, from 7:30 to 8:30 in Room 348. So we have all of our representatives coming, including two national representatives. So we invite everybody to come. Everyone is welcome from the public.
Great. Thank you. Anything? Any superintendent updates? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Is there, oh, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
The mo, or the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina?
Just a brief comment. I support the recommendation. It makes sense. I appreciate the presentation. I just, what Director Green ended with on what we've learned about the profile of students whose needs we can meet. I would really appreciate any data or information that can be captured for just our teaching and learning curriculum development, not to be shared tonight, but just to have in the future that there is a need. And really applauding Edina and our instructors who are meeting this need, recognizing that we as a system need to adapt and that there's a positive outcome for that. So really grateful that there's a variety of needs that are being met and served by this procedure, this process. I would just value knowing a little bit more about that to see how it can inform other decisions. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, of course, want to recognize that that need will remain even in absence of this offering, and that's where the partnership with a larger neighboring district will. For those students who really, online is the need for, you know, whether it's health, anxiety, whatever it may be, or simply they learn most easily that way, that I'm pleased, I would be reticent to offer this if we didn't have a good solution ready for those families that need it, because the need will, will remain even after our current students, you know, graduate to middle school. Just as those students, when they graduate to middle school, some of them are going to say, you know, I'm ready to try in-person. But for those who are continuing online, we already would have had a plan in place for them to provide those services in partnership with another district.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is, I support the recommendation, but I was wondering if there's a minimum threshold for grades four and five that you guys feel that we should meet in order to run grades four and five next year? Because I think there's a balance between being customer-friendly and wanting to support our students and the reality of being fiscally responsible. So I'm just wondering from an administration perspective, I, I mean, I would hope that we can get all 29 students, but let's just say something happens and only 12 decide they want to sign up. Are we committed to running it no matter what? And is that your recommendation? Or is there, is there some sort of cutoff where it's just not feasible to run this?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, Chair Ellenberg. Right now, we believe we will have 25 students. And so that's some of our due diligence work is to guarantee that we really do have a viable section here. We believe that that section will be viable, but it could present a scenario where maybe it's not viable. And then that, that would cause us to not offer it. But I think what we need to do maybe is talk about what that number would be, and we could bring it back on Monday before the board takes action on it.
I think that would be good, because I would hate to approve it and set expectations that we're going to run it no matter what, and then families be super disappointed. And like I said, maybe you guys talk and the recommendation is that we want to meet the needs of our families no matter what, but then I would like that information presented to me because it could have an impact. And I'm not saying it will, but it's just something to consider from a decision-making perspective. So.
It's also nice to be transparent about, because assumably, there is a number, right? If there was literally only one student left, we'd probably have to consider maybe referring them elsewhere. So being transparent about the number in advance seems wise. I'll note that this year, we're operating at a deficit relative to generated revenue because we have class sizes of around 14 per teacher. And so there is room for that, say, 25 to drop to 20 and still have a much more favorable student-to-teacher ratio. So there's, I mean, essentially, other than five students, what we're proposing is consolidating our entire program, which now is two teachers into one. So there is room for students who maybe say, oh, if the program is closing, maybe now is a good time to return to in-person. I'm anticipating there'll be some of that. There's room for some, for some of that to occur. But coming at with a, okay, where is that number for the recommendation? I think that makes good sense.
Okay. And then my second question is that I assume it's sort of a process, well, I guess it is a process question, is that I assume the board will, it might come in two questions, because I assume the board has to vote to basically eliminate the EVP program over time for grades E through eight. And I know I asked this when we talked about it, but I was wondering if, if that's the wording or however we word the resolution or what we approve, does this preclude our eighth graders from taking high school-level classes online?
It would not.
Okay.
That, that for purposes of MDE, having a, first, I suppose there's two points. One, as long as we're approved with MDE, we can, we can have our middle school students, as long as the board wished to and the district wished to. As far as MDE is concerned, we would be, we would be able to continue to do that, even if we were to. And so there's two different things, right? There's the district determining, do we want to offer it? And then there's the state's permission to offer. From the state's standpoint, they have something where you can simply put something on pause, is language that they introduced this year, because so many districts jumped into online learning. And even smaller ones than us found they didn't have enough students to do any grade level. But rather than completely withdrawing their permission to operate, said, well, put it on pause. You retain the right to do it without having to get reauthorized if you decide to come back later. I'm not sure what the length of a pause is. I'm not sure that MDE has specified. But I would propose, though it doesn't say it here, that there's no reason for us to go to MDE and ask for, for them to withdraw the right to offer until they say we've reached such number of years without offering it. So probably the intention would be to maintain the permission to offer it, you know, another pandemic ramps up again. All of a sudden, lots of families want to go back. That retaining the right to offer it, so long as we're able to, I think, would be a good thing. But no, we looked into it. I specifically asked MDE.
Great. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else. Thank you. Thanks for all the information and all the work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion item is a process overview of the city-school-district-boardelection partnership process. Let me just pull this up. So this is coming from the Governance Committee, and at our 1212 work session, the city and the school district agreed it would be beneficial to have some further meetings to come up with a mutually beneficial, beneficial solution. And then we agreed to have governance to work, work on a suggested process. And that's what we're seeing tonight, is the suggested process to work together with the city for this mutually beneficial solution. And so there's some background information, and then it's a fairly simple process. The only thing that I wanted to note is there's two different colors on the process. One is for the 2023 election resolution. That's supposed to come to the board for discussion in, on the 9th, which is next week, and action in February. And then the broader issue of what do we do with future elections, which is the blue. That's the overarching process. So I'm happy to walk through it, or if you guys have questions, feel free to ask. But Julie or Stacy, do you have anything to add from governance perspective?
I think the only thing to add is that I think it is complicated, like for the community to look at this. And so just to be clear again, like we have, there's two different things working at the same time. We have the upcoming 2023 election in November that we did get a resolution from, from the city, a contract to move forward, that the city would still continue to run that election. And that's what will be discussed on Monday. So I think it's just a little bit confusing for the community to follow this. So anything that we can do to help keep communicating that, that there's two different running courses here, I think is helpful. So I just wanted to, anyone listening out there can hear that.
Thank you, Julie. I mean, the basic process, I think, is what we talked about briefly in our meeting, and then governance talked about having the city and school get together to talk about what are our common priorities and goals, and then see if there's a preliminary plan, then coming back to the board to get board feedback, sort of going in and then out and then out until we have a mutually agreed-upon plan. Once we have the 2023 plan in place, it's not quite as urgent, but we still need to get it figured out this spring. So this goes until an, an April, end of April timeframe. So, yes.
Just a point of clarification. So what's important is that for 2023, it's basically continuing on with what we've been doing for a very long time with the city running the election for, on our behalf, as a vendor, basically, that we pay to make, make that happen. And that's what the resolution that was just provided to us by the city that we're going to, Abby asked to consider and approve. That's step one, as Julie was just saying. But now the second part is then talking about, okay, going forward after 2023, what we're going to do from an election standpoint related to the school district. That's what's going to be discussed, as far as what are the options, what are the considerations, what might the city be able to do with us, what might we need to do, so on and so forth. These are all the questions that anyone in the community might have. This is what's going to be discussed between the city and the school district to determine, okay, what is the school district going to do going forward?
Correct.
After 2023.
Correct. And I think there also, though, is a sense of somewhat urgency after we have the resolution figured out for 2023, because the seats that are up, it would, it could potentially impact those seats if things get shifted. So for our community members or anybody who would be running for election, it's important that they would know if there's a shift, if they're running for one year, if they're running for three years, five years, or how. So that's the real impact, so that we're, that's why we're, even though it says it might not happen till, impact 2024, 25, it actually impacts this election. So that's a good point of clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything? Okay. So it looks like the, ideally, we're targeting the first week, the first week, I'm sorry, the week of 1/16/23 to have a, a meeting between the city and the schools. And I know that Stacy, you and I believe Scott have had a couple of conversations or emails back and forth about planning a couple of meetings. And I, does this align with?
Yeah, this, the dates and everything completely aligned with what Scott and I were thinking. And two offices are working to identify times that board, newly-elected board officers would be able to be in those meetings.
Okay. Thank you. That's it? That's all for this discussion item. Are there any leadership or committee updates from board members?
The only committee update is the Legislative Action Committee is having their legislative breakfast a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, January 11th, from 7:30 to 8:30 in Room 348. So we have all of our representatives coming, including two national representatives. So we invite everybody to come. Everyone is welcome from the public.
Great. Thank you. Anything? Any superintendent updates? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Is there, oh, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.